Good evening. Please call the meeting to order. A nice little chime. So, um, to, you know, help call to order, are we expecting? Four, five, six. Okay. There are six of us here, so.
Seven.
David, seven.
Just my, I think I didn't count myself.
Oh, okay.
Do we have any public comment? I'd like to take a moment at the start of the meeting to, um, take a moment to, uh, remember Andrea Martocchio, the Minuteman student from Watertown who was recently killed in a motorcycle accident. You know, it's a, you know, such a tragedy for the family and a tragedy for the entire Minuteman community. We do have a card going around that I hope everyone, you know, will sign tonight. And I'd just like to take, you know, a moment of silence, um, to, you know, hold Andrea's family in our thoughts. Thank you. Um, Dave Horton was nice enough to bring in for all of us in case anyone hasn't seen it, the obituary, so, you know, we can pass this around if anyone would like to take a look.
I would just like to say thank you to the staff and the administration on the support you gave the students, because I think that that was key to me in allowing them to get through that. And allowing everybody to go, the people that wanted to go to the KIOL, it really helped the process for a lot of the kids.
Yeah, it was amazing.
Thank you. Is there anything for, that anyone would like to talk about for the good of the organization?
I went to the final meeting of the year of the HQCC group. I had an opportunity to see the, um, last workings of the new Perkins Plan draft, which I believe is now on the web for, uh, comment. There's a 30-day comment period. I believe it's already been taken to the governor for signature, but, um, that, uh, it is up there and ready to be read. And, uh, that's about it.
I'd just like to say, I went to the basketball game, uh, state basketball game. Let me tell you, that was a great team. They, they did lose. They played great. They were terrific. The gym was pretty darn near filled. And lots of students, I've told lots of alumni, faculty, administration. It was a great event and, uh, you know, everybody should be congratulated, especially the players that you've coached.
Sounds great. Anything else? Okay, I think next we would need a motion, um, as written, to, um, enter into executive session.
I will move that we enter into executive session for summat semester law. Uh, item thirty, section, uh, A, thirty A, section twenty-one, section A three. For the purpose of discussing strategy that relates to negotiations with the Minuteman Faculty Association, as an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the Minuteman School Committee as declared by the chairman.
To return to open session.
To return to open session.
And who should remain to join us?
Julia. Steve's not.
I know.
George and Amy.
Are those superintendents?
Yeah, me too.
Second.
Shouldn't be too long.
Jennifer Leoni like, yes.
House, Lucas, Joe, yes.
Dave Horton likes me also.
Cam, there's Sackton, yes.
Jeff Stulden need him, yes.
Ford's falling, Dory, yes.
April, I'm good.
Superintendents, thank you for your patience, um, with us as we wrapped up our executive session, and thank you very much for joining us here tonight.
So the first item on my report is the approval of the ratification of an MOU with the Minuteman Faculty Association for collective bargaining agreement beginning July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. I'd ask the school committee board to vote.
I will vote to ratify memorandum of agreement with the Minuteman Faculty Association for collective bargaining agreement for the period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have discussion?
There was a good visa.
Yes. Move the point about the.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, the bargaining subcommittee had suggested, uh, that, uh, as, as either a, uh, an addendum to this contract or a cover letter, that the first year, uh, COLA, three percent, it's in recognition for all the extra effort the faculty made in getting ready to move and moving over to this building. So, uh, that was one thing that Jennifer and I, as, as members of the subcommittee, had, had, uh, recommended.
Great. And we'll, uh, agree with that language when we get to that point. I don't know if, um, the Minuteman Faculty Association has anything they'd like to say?
Uh, sure. We started this process actually back in September with our association. We, um, survey all of the members, get some feedback on important, uh, information that they would like to be brought forward. And then we started, our team started meeting, myself, Jeanne Apollo, Sheila Engel, Mike Camino, and Pete Calaver, who couldn't attend tonight. Uh, we met, I couldn't even count how many times. Um, and then we began meeting with Ed. And, uh, they were really productive conversations. We didn't always agree, um, but they were really healthy and positive and really student-focused conversations. So, um, it was actually, I've been a part of negotiations for many, many years. Um, and it was, this was probably one of the best, uh, negotiation processes I've been involved in. It's definitely the most comprehensive. Uh, there are eighteen different items that we tackled. Um, I've been involved in a, in a contract where we only did COLA, you know? So to really sit and go through eighteen different items, and that is what we finally agreed to were eighteen. So there were countless other ones that we agreed to continue the conversation for future contracts. So it was definitely the most productive and healthy that, that I've been a part of. Um, and then when we were meeting with the subcommittee, um, you guys brought forward some really important questions, um, that we then discussed and, you know, your team broke out and then came back. So it was a, definitely a collaborative, um, opportunity with us and the school committee. Um, and then we did come to this agreement. So, um, we're, we're hopeful that it passes through your committee. And then our plan is for tomorrow to have a full association meeting, and then we vote to ratify on Monday. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Diane. I, I really found it to be, uh, effective and collaborative, but I also enjoyed it. You know, we got to talk about some things around the school and the academy model. And, um, the thing I really appreciate, um, was this, there's this commitment to doing it, you know? There's, we want to do it as best we can. We want to do it in a way that helps kids, uh, doing it responsibly. And, uh, I just want to thank you, you know, publicly for all your work and, uh, you know, being transparent and truthful about what our interests were. And we didn't always agree, but I think we have a stronger agreement that benefits kids and the school. So thank you.
Other questions or comments before we vote? All in favor? Any, um, opposed? Pass it unanimously. I again want to add my thanks for, um, you know, the spirit of collaboration, the openness. I want to thank both, um, you know, the Teachers Association, the superintendent, and the negotiations committee, and especially for approaching it in such a student-centered way. So thank you.
Continuing with my report, uh, Chapter 74 regulations, access issues came for update. There was an advocacy day today that was held at the State House. We did have someone from Minuteman there. It was not me. We do have a legislative breakfast coming up on Friday, March 20th, which is really an opportunity for us to advocate with our legislative team around Minuteman issues, given what's been going on today and things around Perkins Plan, I think we're going to want to talk about on the 20th. There is something in your packet around the, this came out after the Cambridge School Committee visited here. One of the school committee members from Cambridge posted a section on Minuteman in our Facebook page. I just thought that was, um, interesting. Uh, there's some issues, little flyer on the advocacy day today. And I think the, the slot allocation procedure is what I'd like to go to now. You may recall in our admissions policy, on an annual basis, uh, committee from the administration recommends a slot allocation formula to the school committee. And we included in this an example as well on pages seven through 11, I believe, is an example of how the slots are calculated, how they're awarded through the admissions process. And then on page 12 would be the allocations, um, that we would be using, that we are using in, uh, at this point in our admissions process. And Anthony is here, the Assistant Principal of Admissions. If you have any questions about current admissions numbers, Anthony can share those as well. So generally, we're using a, well, someone else can explain it better than I can, probably.
Who would like to take that on?
Well, you do it? Yeah.
Walk us through the, uh, formula?
Yeah, definitely. So, um, the slot allocations are based on two criteria. So one is an equal share. Uh, so half of the slot allocations are equally shared between members of town. So, um, you know, fifty percent divided by nine member towns is, I don't machine for me, I apologize, I think it's 5.56 or something to that effect. Um, and then fifty percent is based on a, the average of the four-year rolling, um, enrollment, um, for each member town. Um, so in the scenario I gave you, I just tried to use easy numbers. I actually used ten towns instead of nine, just for math sake. Um, so in that scenario, there are, do you mind if I just look over here? So in this scenario, there are 200 spots, so fifty percent of the spots, so 100 of the slots, um, would be divvied up evenly between each town, so 10 slots per town. The other half would be based on, um, the average of the last four years of, you know, how many students your town makes up in the school. Um, so in this scenario, if you have, you know, two percent of the enrollment over the past four years, you would have a total of 12 spots, uh, and so on and so forth for the, um, for each town based on what their rolling average is. Uh, this actually only comes into play when there are more applicants than there are seats in the first round of admission. So in this year's admissions, we had, uh, we have 182 seats and we had 176 students we were able to offer admission to. So slot allocations did not come into play because we were able to offer admission to all students who met that, who, of that 176. So there was a six gap, so we didn't have to go to slot allocations. In the event, so the second example talks about, uh, when there, when we have more applicants than we do seats. And in that case, what happens is the, we start by ranking the, each applicant within each town, so the top 10 students in Lancaster, the top 10, whatever it is, however many applicants you have, uh, they will admit those students based on your allocation. Um, some towns will not use all of their slot allocations, in the hypothetical, some towns will not use all of their slot allocations. In that event, any of these slots that are unused or are unused are then pooled. So then you have a kind of pool of slots that are available. And then we just, we, we take the remaining students who were not allocated originally from the towns that have more applicants than they have slot allocations. And we rank all those students regardless of town, all member towns, regardless of town, and then admit them based on, if we have 20 extra slots, we'll admit the top 20 students. Um, and that's kind of how that first round of admissions goes. In any following rounds of admissions, it's based, so it starts with any in district students, um, and it's based really on just rank order, it's not slot allocated at that point in time. And so all, both of those scenarios are spelled out in that example. Either Alice or Jennifer.
Jennifer, the announce.
No, okay. So, okay.
Sorry, the order I saw in hands.
I, some of this is, is in the regional agreement. That's the 50, the, uh, four-year rolling average, is that?
That's in the regional agreement, and the concept of an equal share is in there when it comes to the capital.
It is as well. Okay. So that, the 50, 50, so that is the equal share for whatever, for the 50% in the regional agreement as well? So this is really.
It's a little different with the concept of an equal share in capital. I think the equal share is just 1%.
It's 1%?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, um, was there any, I mean, I'm okay with the four-year rolling average as long as Lancaster's goes down at some point. Well, is it, was there any consideration of, say, looking at the percentage of eighth grade students from each member town going and doing the allocation, the other 50% based on that?
So based on a number of.
Because Lancaster sends 20% of their eighth grade students. Between 18 and 20%. Some towns send 0.01%, you know, whatever, you know, so. It's getting clear. But it, was there any indication, because my, Lancaster is also the least affluent community member in this district. And if we keep going up, I mean, now by, by looking at the, what you, there's another 22 students are, is our slot allocation for next fiscal year. It's 5% of our budget already. We can't do this. I mean, that, I think you're asking too much of Lancaster. So I would like to see some way that some of the other member towns who don't have as many students percentage-wise going, have the ability to send those kids. I recognize that, then it can all go into a pool, whatever you don't use. But how many, how many eighth grade students are there in Needham?
A lot.
Okay. So, you know, I was, I would prefer something that would start to even out the percentages in, for the communities. That's just from Lancaster's point of view.
I think I might have an idea of how to solve that. So I'm not necessarily saying for this particular year, but you could do, um, a percentage of the eighth grade class, whatever the percentage is, it would be an equal percentage for every town, would, would equal the total number of students that you need, like it's 8% or 7% or whatever of the eighth grade class. Or the slot of allocation based on the four-year rolling average, whichever is greater. So that would mean that if Needham is undersending, and they could be sending 8% of their senior, whatever, eighth grade class, and it's a bigger number than what, what we have here, you wouldn't be kind of perpetuating the undersending from the, the two or three towns that are undersending. You could say their slot allocation is this, or this method with the rolling average, whichever is greater. And then, of course, they won't send as many kids, and you'll still have to divide the, the slots up according to.
Ranking.
The ranking, but at least you've made an attempt to do it out that way. I think that would work.
Does that matter if we have slots for all the students who want to come?
No.
No. So I think that, um, so for this year, it's irrelevant. For next year, it may be relevant. So I think that what you should do is you should, exactly what you're doing, you should write up a suggestion. I think we should, uh, look at it and prepare for adoption for next year. So in the event that we do have more students than slots, I understand what you're trying to do, then the other towns can get, uh, more of those slots than they would under this procedure.
Right.
I think that makes sense.
Even out things a little bit.
But it only is relevant when we have more students than slots. Yeah. So I think it's a good idea, personally, unless there's some, uh, although some communities may complain, I, I don't have any trouble with it.
No, there's definitely, the current system, uh, continues to reward the, um, communities that have been sending a lot. Uh, and what you're suggesting is, um, looking at a way, as you say, evening it out a little bit, if there are the students to do that from other communities.
Other member.
Other member communities.
Correct.
Yes. But for what is on the table right now, we are obligated to approve a slot allocation.
This year.
For this year. So I think, um, you know, I think what we're, um, voting on is whether to approve the slot allocation for this year that, um, has been outlined here. Um, and then perhaps we can consider your suggestions for next year.
Do you have a question to take on that?
Oh, don't, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for keeping me on track. I thought we did. Hey, Jeff, want to make a motion?
I move the slot application procedure for the, um, upcoming school year as described in the packet.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed of stating?
Just, I had a question for Anthony. Where are we with the second round of offerings?
Yep, so in terms of numbers or timeline, or both?
Both.
Both. So, um, just because we have, I don't know if you guys have had these numbers, I know we met up the task for, the enrollment task force, but in the first round of admissions, we offered 176 students offers of admission, as I mentioned earlier. Um, their deadline was March 8th, and as of that deadline, 159 of them had accepted our offer, which is a 90% acceptance rate. In our second round, which runs from February 15th to March 15th, so we, we will, we interview out-of-district students, but we also continue to interview in district students as well. So there are actually 28 more in district students in this piece, meaning that there will be some in district students who will find their way onto a waitlist, but we can look, there will be enrollment opportunities likely for those people down the line. Um, and then there are, so there, those that offer for admissions go out on March 16th, they have till March 29th to confirm their acceptance. In addition to these 28 in district students, we also have, uh, we had 132 kind of completed applications minus a interview for out-of-district students. We've been interviewing over the last two weeks, uh, more than 60 students from primarily Belmont and Watertown, um, 27 from Belmont and 28 from Watertown, and nine from a variety, one-off towns here and there. And based on these numbers, all of them will be waitlisted.
Can I just clarify, the 28 in district students in this second round, is that 28 total or 28 that you've offered admission to?
No, 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 28 that, so if we haven't offered admission, we won't do that until the, the timeframe closes.
Okay.
So we will only be able to offer 59 minus 182, 23 students.
And that's assuming you don't get any more acceptances from the 176s.
So we've reached out to all those individuals three or four times. So they're in like a basically acceptance withdrawn status right now.
Any other questions on admission, or for Anthony right now on, um, on the slot allocation and where we are?
So that's all freshmen?
Correct, yeah.
What about sophomores?
We have no.
None? Okay, so that, was there any interest?
I imagine there was, yeah.
Okay. You're right. The freshman class is too big as it is. Okay.
I don't know if there was anything you wanted to say in the enrollment task force update, which was.
There is, yes.
Maybe we do that now?
Okay. So, uh, you just heard that report, right? So we are in a, a very different position than we were in two years ago. But I want to, uh, bring up Jennifer's point, that some communities, uh, have not had the wisdom to take advantage of this school as, as much as other communities. So we still have a communications issue, because a student who could take advantage of this school from a community who does not have the opportunity because of lack of understanding what we can do for them, is to me a problem. So even though, as of today, we have a different communication problem than we were talking about a year or so ago. At the enrollment task force meeting, I passed out that list that, um, we had developed as a, that we developed as a school committee, all the suggestions that we had made on admissions issues. And funny thing was, is that list was, was dated, you know, February one year ago, and how things have changed since then. Nevertheless, communications is important for two reasons. First, because things change, and as the situation changes in some of our member towns, our, our enrollment profile may change. And we still have, uh, parents in communities who do not understand the school as well as they should. So what we, and, and add to that the fact that at some point we're going to have to deal with families who are in district who do not get in and who are going to be unhappy about it is a communication issue there as well. So what we're going to be doing on the task force in the future is we're going to take all those suggestions that were made by members of the school committee. We're going to discuss with the administration, we're going to give them some ranking of importance, because you can't do everything. And then we're going to, um, proceed and oversee the ongoing effort, making sure that we remember that communities who are not sending all the children who should have an opportunity to come here is important to look at, even if we're full. And, and to even out the enrollment, as mentioned by Jennifer. And to continue the discussion in the greater community about Minuteman, so that in the future, as things change in our member towns, we still end up with a very healthy enrollment profile. So that's how the, and so even though my head is exploding, based on the difference from a year ago when we first presented that document to now, I still think that the same, basic idea has validity, and we're going to be, um, moving in that direction in conjunction with the administration. I think that's basically what we discussed in our meeting. Did I miss anything?
At least one of the things that we looked at during that meeting was, um, something that did give the, um, percentage of eighth grade, um, students that are from each of our districts that are coming to Minuteman, which I think is something that might be interesting to share with the entire school committee, so that we can see the, the range there. I'm sorry, Ford.
Should the school committee take them and then look at that document and see if we want to add anything to the list?
I think that, um, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to have them send out in the next packet, not the copy of the document.
Good point.
Well, I'd just remind, uh, the member from Needham, that we, uh, we were, the task force was going to put some input into it and then send it out to the school committee, right?
Uh, that, that, we are going to work with the administration to prioritize it, but there's certainly no reason why you can't see the document that we had already passed out to refresh your memory of all the things that were on that extensive list.
We'll find it for you.
It's 80,000 pages long, it's very.
You know I won't look at it.
And the task force will be reading it for the next week.
This is one page.
Have some, an updated version to have for the next meeting.
Comes in 25 pages.
Are there anything else, any questions for Jeff on the enrollment task force? Shall we move to the, um, the. Shall we move to the? Yes, that's what I'm moving to right now.
Did you vote on the slot allocation?
We did.
We did. Oh, okay, great.
Yes. So the annual Western Pathways Conference.
I've been invited to speak there with Dr. Gene Bottoms. You may recall Minuteman years ago was a high schools that worked school. Gene Bottoms was the CEO of the Southern Regional Employment Board. And he, he's asked me to speak with him on the topic you see there. He's also writing a book and he's coming in to interview staff and students. Run rigorous academics and its role in high quality for a tech ed. They are paying me some travel and the registration, so it's just, if, if we're all traveling at that time, it's in June.
This could be my question.
Tending coronavirus, I vote to approve Dr. Bruce Phillips' travel to the sixth annual Western Pathways Conference between 10th through 12th, 2020 in Kansas City.
Second.
Kansas City.
Here we come.
All in favor? Any opposed or standing?
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Principals report.
Okay, in the packet is an opposed calendar, version one. 2020, 2021 school year.
It has page 50.
It's a different format than we've had in the past and I thank Julia for that. Just a better software program, a little bit easier to work with. A lot easier to work with.
This reflects the more early release on Wednesday, right?
Yeah, yeah, and some of the, you know, rejected contract language. Which we did, so.
George?
Yes.
It's hard, we have black and white copies, maybe you do too. And it's, for instance, in the August, September, it's hard to see where, tell what the, what the dates are, the new teacher orientation and the officers return. Could those dates be filled in in addition to color?
If you look at it online, it's in color.
Why don't you do that?
You want a color version?
Yeah.
We get your color version.
And also for Janu, when there are vacations, sometimes I look at it, I'm always, and other schools, because I'm not quite sure when the offices are closed. And for instance, on January, look at the January calendar. It also includes that schools, school is closed, New Year's Day, office is closed, school closed. Maybe, maybe it goes without saying. But then on, in February, during the February 15th through 19th winter break, offices are open. So that, I would suggest writing that in, but take it suggested or not, but it's winter break, but offices are open. I think they are, correct?
Yes.
Oh, oh, I see, I hear you.
But you write it in that the offices are open. And the same thing for spring break, write in that the offices are.
Monday we're closed.
Yeah. Oh, who put, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the calendar? Want to move on?
Sure.
Yep.
We vote the calendar.
Do we need to vote the calendar?
Make a motion to approve the calendar.
Version one.
Version one.
Second. Any discussion?
I just go to the back of the head.
George met with the MFA.
Yes, the MFA is there.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Skills USA district results. Wednesday, February 26th, 44 students, three of which were NTI post-secondary students and post-staff went to the district league competition for Skills USA. We had 24 medal winners, 17 of which received either gold or silver, which allows them to continue on to the state level competition in late April at Blackstone. Again, assuming that, I don't hope these things can happen. I have a list of the winners here. I can read them all off or I can, you know, I think we've lost it out through social media.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna comment, the, the social media content and information was great this year. Keep that up, please.
Oh yeah, sure. We've been attaching it to daily announcements, which we do.
Can I just note that our gold medal winner in CNC milling was a young lady. And our gold medal NTI winner in electrical was a little bit older lady.
We also had a young lady who won the gold for advanced manufacturing. She also won a special medal for perfect explorer ocean test.
Yeah, we're having a good year.
Yeah, very impressive.
Do post-secondary people go to these Skills USA?
We haven't in the last four or five years.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
But previous, we had post-grads go. We were known nationally for our baking post-grad winners, gold medal winners.
So there's no age level?
For MTI students, no.
For MTI, yeah. I sort of saw that. That's good, I'm done.
George, this seems like a larger list than, or is my memory not good or?
No, we, I think Cliff Kerstedt and Denise Dan Maroja are taking over the new to it. And I think they're bringing a new level of just enthusiasm and I must have Denise once a week coming up with some idea or something going on she wants to do. So I think, I think it's helped. You know, she's really marshaled the kids, she's really worked hard at it. So it's good. She's really brought a lot of energy back in. Not that it's ever really gone away. I think she just took it to another level of passion, which is awesome.
And I think Dave, as Dave mentioned, I think the social media information out there is vastly improved.
An update on coronavirus. Put out our first letter last week, just really just acknowledging that we're aware of it. Letting community know that, you know, our community services have the capability and the training to make sure that they're, you know, following CDC recommendations for keeping the COVID free. But obviously, this is a continuously evolving situation. About to issue another update today and then the governor's so, can, we have to kind of scrap that update because it's, we have to think of all implications of those. We had a team meet Monday, a pandemic response team. Out of that meeting, we put signs on the doors and signs in the bathrooms, video screens around the building, rolling information, hand washing, you know, just being aware of what we can do to help prevent the virus from spreading. Stay home if you're sick, all of that. We met today, obviously a lot of the bellows announced that. We're meeting tomorrow, we have our two digital learning career reader leads, they're two of our best teachers. Along with Victor Woodruff at IT. They're gonna put together, kind of compile information that we know a lot of faculty know, but we're gonna put a little handbook of if we had to provide a lot more education online because we needed to shut down, what are the key skills that you need to be able to do using the technology that you already have? You know, Office 365, Aspen, Skype, you know, just a little premise. And tomorrow afternoon, we're gonna alter what we had planned for our professional development and turn it into a, just a get ready for the eventuality of just in case we need to go online with that. We're also gonna meet tomorrow morning as an administrative team. You know, I think it's fairly easy to say, you know, obviously international travel, out of state travels, we're gonna talk about that. I think that's what we really suggested not to happen, but I don't know. But his comments today were about gatherings and non-essential gatherings and workshops. And we have those things coming up on our schedule, you know. For admission, for example, it's the teaching event. That's a huge event. I don't know how necessary it is. I mean, it's great for enrollment purposes, but, you know, you're bringing it. So we're gonna be talking about that and all other field trips that haven't approved any really last week at all that people would put on, I've just asked them all to wait, but just taking a look at what we already have approved and, you know, which ones we do, there's a lot of people that have to use it to, you know, come to get a sense of some of that. Along with that is the Puerto Rico trip. Even though that's technically international, you know, we banned that around last week. You know, not knowing about the spread of the virus and a doomsday scenario is what if, what if one of the students or the kids was symptomatic down in Puerto Rico and was asked to, you know, stay there, don't bring it back. You know, I think there was a case now in the Dominican Republic last week. It's, you know, even some of the articles that we had talked about, there's an awful lot of commerce of those between the two islands. So Puerto Rican officials are concerned, plus tourism itself, and there is a case standing out with the Italian trip. So I think it was the right decision to make to cancel the trip. But obviously, that comes with, you know, the kids were devastated. I felt really bad telling them that. But like, I think it's in their best interest, in our best interest, for them to go. But there was a financial impact to that. I think Erin's, yeah, she's doing awesome. Christian Torres is here. So we really can kind of talk about that more specifically, just to give you that information because there was a little bit of a, we're just paying what, what's going on. It's all right, I would ask that we kind of fill in that part of the report.
Before we do, can I just have a question about, in general, Minuteman has a fairly aggressive absentee policy. If somebody doesn't feel particularly well, stays home but doesn't want to go to a doctor because, are we gonna, is it, you know, three absences?
We now have a very relaxed policy.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that the realization, okay.
The government made it pretty clear that, and we've never heard one like this, but really in terms of calculating some of the county scores by guessing, they're gonna stop at March 2nd. They didn't post that. You're gonna expect to see what would look like.
Don't tell the seniors.
We're not telling anyone.
All right, sorry.
No, that's a, that's a fair question.
Okay, I just, I was concerned that people would then send their kids.
Additionally, they waived the 180.
Right, okay.
Which I've never, ever.
We have to shut down, what do you do? Okay, thank you. Sorry, Erin.
No, you don't have to apologize to me. I don't know if you guys have specific questions. Right now, we haven't actually received any refunds, but we're working really diligently to recruit as much of the $1,300 that every student paid. You know, it just happened, so we're still waiting to hear back from some vendors. Now that the emergency has been declared, things are gonna change. Other trips are also now in the queue. We have verbal commitments from several vendors to refund us our money because we asked early enough before this is gonna happen. But again, because we don't have the physical check in hand, it's not really something that I feel comfortable discussing until I see it coming. But we won't stop working to get those funds back. We are gonna go ahead with our fundraiser that was planned for next Wednesday at the Friendly Toast. So if you agree, we'll have to go to the Burlington Mall next Wednesday, barring any further, you know, obviously, any further, I guess. We're gonna have that there. But we did, we talked with the business office, we're working actively with all of the vendors and all the places that we've already spent the money. The way, just in the case people don't know, the way that student activities money works is that we have to collect the funds and they have to be here first before we can then spend them. So it's not like a normal allocation. And so the money is spent, you know, the students paid already and the money is then spent. So it doesn't work the other way around, which makes it a little bit more difficult and not necessarily the way that other trips and like our sister schools are run. So it's a little bit more work, but I am fully confident that we'll be able to make the best of it and get students back a significant portion of what they spent.
Yeah, and I just want to thank Erin right away. She came and worked with Sonia and Michelle to try and quantify some of those expenses that have already been paid for, some of the things like the airfare. It's actually a very small penalty. It's not, you know, it's not a large penalty. So they're, they're really working hard at it and I just, to their credit, they, you know, as soon as they knew we were going to cancel, they've been working hard figuring this out. We'll work on it together.
You also may not know that on the superintendent's list served today, a lot of superintendents who are in this position, and some, some schools have spent literally hundreds of thousands of dollars on foreign trips with a couple of vendors who, travel agents, EF, some other ones. They're, they're creating a letter that's gonna, and they're doing some legal stuff around it. Superintendents are all gonna sign on to it. There must be 100 superintendents so far that are collaborating on this issue.
Fortunately or unfortunately for us, we are our own contractors. We don't work with an outside group. We do it all. So I think in some ways it makes it easier for us because the vendors have a one-on-one relationship with us. You know, we don't go through a company. We have, you know, conversations and relationships with smaller organizations and that's how we make, make it work and make it affordable. So they're much more willing to work with us at this point. It's just getting the actual information and that takes time, you know.
So any other further fundraising, obviously isn't going to be paying for the trip. Is it gonna be paying to help mitigate some of the penalties?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, the verbal, the verbal confirmations I have from our vendors that say they're gonna work with us and give us sort of the most back that we can get, we'll keep pushing those. So if there is any fundraising and there's extra, it will just be allocated towards future trips.
And it's the community service.
Community service, student activities.
Yeah, that's their activity fund, so it can be used either way.
Exactly. So it's going back to the students, doesn't get, it's a student activities fund that is earmarked for their use only.
So you're gonna do the best you can and get as much of the $1,300 back for each student?
Yeah, and we're working with Newton North and some of their chaplains. They are helping advocate for us as well, so we've got a team of people that are pushing hard. We'll get it done.
Dave, did you?
No, I was gonna bring up the fact that in, we have international business travel with, with the company I work with. And again, because of Puerto Rico's active cruise ships and other travel, the, the number of countries that they interact with put them at a high risk area. In fact, the whole Caribbean is at a high risk. So while I, I understand from the student's perspective and having a child who's part of that, they're extremely disappointed. I, I think it's, it's the most prudent thing to do in making sure that we are, are looking at, at the wellbeing of, of the students. You know, sometimes you gotta make those hard decisions. You know, if it was, you know, heading down to, to, you know, one of the lower 48 states, we'd be fine. And, and making it that decision as well. But I, I do have to say, this was, this was the right call. I truly believe it's the right call. And, you know, it, it's, it's a difficult decision, but it was, it was well done.
Yeah, I'll just pull up by saying I had a more fact that the team of teachers who put the whole trip together, Cliff Kerstedt, Christian Torres is back there, of course. One of the things I love working about, working with Erin, one of the things I love about her is she's super organized. All her paperwork looks beautiful too. And before I can, you know, as I was thinking of questions, I got it about halfway on, she was, no, that, yep, I know what you're gonna ask me and all the forms. We've really been meeting since January because it, you know, first got on my radar when, before the virus really took off, was the earthquake situation. I just wanted to, you know, be good and talk a lot about Christian Torres and his family there. Okay, so we felt better about that and we just thought we'd keep in touch and every time the updates were, everyone was looking good until the virus started to show up and, and it wasn't looking good. It's unfortunate, unfortunate, but if she works as hard and that team works as hard as they did getting this together, we'll get a lot of that refund.
Well, thank you for all your work on this. We know that it's a, it's a big disappointment. So George, can I just, just, I want to just. So George, can I just, just, I want to understand sort of what you were saying in terms of what you're doing right now, preparing for the impact of the coronavirus. I think you said you're going to be working with teachers on preparing for, I think you were talking about some online learning, that you're evaluating field trips, you're making a determination of what workshops and meetings are essential and non-essential. Is there any other piece that I missed or is that was kind of the major?
Those are the major, then, then just communicating that out to stakeholders. Like I said, we have, it just keeps changing so fast. It's hard to keep up with.
Any questions for George? Okay, thank you. Finance report.
Good evening. The first agenda item is the budget process update. So I prepared a memo that you got tonight, and that memo has two lists on it. The first lists are the finance committee meetings that we have been invited to attend and have provided a budget proposal presentation. Even though that's only five districts, several districts actually made us aware that they really didn't need us to come and do a presentation, that their town administrators or their finance directors were familiar enough with our budget process and comfortable enough that we didn't need to attend. So we're doing our due diligence to meet with our member district finance committees to prepare for ultimately the town meeting, the town meetings where we need to get approval. The second list actually lists the first day of every town meeting for each one of our member districts. But it's important to note that the annual town meetings sometimes are more than one day long, and so the town administrator usually notifies superintendent, we're going to need you to come on the first day or the second day, so this isn't necessarily the day that we will be presenting, but it is the first day of the annual town meetings for all of our member districts. In accordance with the regional agreement, as far as the budget process, we need to get two-thirds of our communities to vote affirmatively for the budget that we're proposing that the school committee passed and we're proposing. And so I remain cautiously optimistic, we've had good positive feedback at our meetings, we've attended some FinCom meetings twice, you know, we've been asked to come up, you know, earlier, and so it created some good dialogue and I think that we're getting good feedback that people really, you know, our communities appreciate the quality of education you're providing and they understand the financial challenges. So the budget process, the next step after all these FinCom meetings are these annual town meetings, two-thirds of those votes will approve our final budget. And that's the budget process update. Does anybody have any questions?
Can I just comment that ACT and not only has had to come up twice, but they're now asking for a video presentation. You forwarded that to me, please.
A lot of retard on that. I think it's part of the annual town presentation they suggested, or.
No, 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 this is an actual little video.
We can put that together, yeah. We can put that together, we've got a lot of.
We're not putting a video together, okay? We have videos.
That's right, yeah.
It's going to be a repeat. Sorry. It's now meeting season.
You're going to look up?
I need a line.
That's for Tommy, but we'll talk.
So if we're comfortable with budget process update.
Yes, we are.
Then we can move on to the approval of the special education increment fee for non-resident districts. And so many of our districts have been inquiring as to what our special education increment fee will, fee will be billed for in this fiscal year twenty-one for their budget paying purposes. Annually, the school committee approves the special education increment fee. The finance subcommittee reviewed the document that you have before you tonight and the calculations that are attached to it that are used to determine the education increment fee at their meeting last Wednesday, March 4th. They endorsed the special education increment fee for the approval by the full committee, act required. I'd asked that the school committee move that the school committee vote to establish a special education increment fee for fiscal year twenty-one to be seven thousand four hundred dollars.
All in favor? Basses unanimously.
Okay, agenda item C is the approval of the monthly information list of donations as presented. The school committee was provided with a monthly informational list of donations, there are two hundred dollar donations, we are very thankful for those donations, and I would ask the school committee to vote to approve the March list of donations.
Discussion? All in favor?
Agenda item D is informational, it's not an agenda item for the school committee to vote on, but it is a statutory requirement that the retirement board notify the school committee that they will be voting on this action regarding the COLA. So I'm prepared, actually Kevin Mahoney, who's on the board, prepared that document for you, and I just am notifying you of providing you that allocation. You have any questions, if you want, you have to answer them on.
Any questions for Bob?
And it's consistent with the teachers' retirement system, it's a COLA on the first thirteen thousand out of the total, so the retirement board must feel that they can afford to do that.
So you don't need a vote from us to authorize?
No, it's just informational, they, they have statutory requirement to inform you that they're considering at their meeting.
It looks like in two thousand, we did vote on this, information on page nineteen, that's why I voted positive.
In what year?
Two thousand, it says.
Twenty years ago?
Twenty years ago, that's what it says. On page nineteen.
We haven't voted on it, my tenure here has been an informational thing, if there's some change, we'll bring it back.
Yeah, it is statutory, it's, it's under their authority.
Okay.
Well, no, in two thousand, we voted to allow them to annually grant the COLA.
Right, but a three percent.
Yeah, in excess, so as long as it stays below three percent, they don't even have us, if they come back to us, they want more than three percent, is the way I read it.
You probably are right, you can agree.
Right, the annual consideration must be done, you probably vote.
All right.
Good reading.
Other questions? Thank you. Let's move on to building, school building committee report.
Punch list, there are thirty-three open items, fifty-eight have been not approved, one hundred and ninety-six are already going to inspect. The majority of the open items will be completed in the April vacation, and shortly thereafter, the punch list should be.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I think, I didn't. You may know this, I couldn't remember whether you did or not, but we received our final certificate of occupancy for the building.
No.
Except for the theater. We have a temporary occupancy for the main floor, the second floor and the theater. This is all based around, it's the inspectors, building inspector's request for netting to go up for safety purposes, which is going to cost about twenty-two thousand dollars. That will be completed on March twenty-seventh, building inspector will come back on the thirtieth, and hopefully that will lead to the full building with a certificate of occupancy.
Ford, what does the net do, like catch students if they're?
Yeah, and there are some open places as you go way up and they're open and they just, they would like to have that in there. As you noticed when you drove in today, or I hope you noticed, the demolition is well underway. I actually had a chance to tour it yesterday, it's really quite interesting, extremely well planned out, the process is going, going well. They expect to have the building down in the next couple of weeks, and then they're going to spend the next month and a half or so working on the ground and cleaning everything up. You'll see piles out there, that's all owned by the demolition company, they take it and sell it or whatever they do. What I found interesting is, is when a truckload of equipment, of material is leaving, it's first of all wrapped in a, some kind of a wrapper, and the build truck, and that is all washed down, that's taken to where it's going to go and it's washed down again before it comes back. It's, it's interesting. They're constantly spraying hose up there, really to keep the dust down, but that's going on. We are about then to go into the MSBA module eight, which is the completion of the project, goes out in final payment, and that should begin when in July, I think, we'll start that process. That takes a while, but at least we'll start that. We reported to the building committee that we are currently estimating a project surplus of about one point nine million dollars. Ed is going to have more to say on that when he discusses the athletic. Any questions?
Athletic fields update, are we doing that now?
Yes, we are. We're not going to do it in executive session. So the athletic is on the screen there. If you're a fan of good to great, Mr. Allen, there's a component of his approach that's called the brutal facts. And an organization's ability to face the brutal facts and not drop over and die is a real indicator that the organization's moving in the right direction. So, so as more things have become clear to the building committee, and as we have tried to clarify some things around our athletic fields, I wanted to just bring the school committee up to date and talk about it a little bit. I'm not asking for any kind of a vote or anything like that. I shared this presentation pretty much as it is with the finance committee last week. And I kind of entitled this, what do we want to do for our kids? And from the point we're at right now, what can we do? What may we do? What do we want to do? And how do we do any of it?
And dooby dooby doo.
Because regardless of how, it's really, what are we going to do to put the icing on the cake, as Ford likes to refer to, to this, this campus? So the purpose of this is just to go over a little history, like what we knew when we knew it, what we have in the base project that's been approved by MSBA, what we have in Alt One, which has also been approved by MSBA, what we have in the full build, and then how the phasing of the full build might work, and then if we have time for a discussion now, but I really want you all to be reflective about answering those questions, what do we want for our kids? The general timeline, this is reviewed for most of us, the preferred schematic report and the thirty-eleven budget was submitted to MSBA in the fourteen-fifteen timeframe. Two thousand sixteen, we had the district-wide ballot. In two thousand seventeen, Gilbane's timeline, which I just reviewed their presentation, and it was a six point five million dollar savings that got us into the building a year earlier, and that aggressive timeline was something that we, was really a significant component of our choosing Gilbane. We never thought the full seven million would be available to us for the athletic fields, but we had been figuring about four to five million might be. So in two thousand seventeen, yeah, the savings, that seven million would go into the MSBA Alt One, which we put in our MSBA so that they knew what we were going to do with our proposed savings. This was something that was recommended to us to do by SCANSCA, it had been done before in other projects where they anticipated some savings, so how are you going to use it? If you don't use it, you got to give it back. After it took us so long to get it, I didn't feel like giving it back either. So for, for a number of years, we've been discussing public-private partnerships, that's what D three stands for, specifically with Lexington. In two thousand eighteen, the governor signed this house bill that allows us to enter long-term ground leases. We anticipated that as a necessity, to really try and develop the campus. And now for the last three years, we've been dealing with the construction realities. So this is the base contract which is funded. Doesn't look like much, does it? Don't worry. So what's in the base contract? Well, there's a school there right now, so the full demolition of the school is included, all the design and permitting have been completed, full remediation of the site, there's fill that's going back in to a certain altitude or elevation. Elevation. We have primary electric duct bank in there, a new transformer, some site work, lighting and water to that, into that base contract, so it'll allow us to do any one of the other things that we are anticipating doing. Alternate one, which went to the MSBA, includes one synthetic football field with a track, and then two grass multipurpose fields. No stadia, no fieldhouse. This was what was the full build, which we have permitted in Lincoln and Lexington, three synthetic fields, multipurpose fields, tennis courts, fieldhouse, stadia, lighting, a little bit different configuration of the parking and looping in, and that was fully paid for and is permitted in both communities. That took fourteen months to get done. So the full build estimate, which was recently revised, just to remind you, was about sixteen point five million. So far for that full build, we've paid five hundred and forty thousand dollars out of the project for design and permitting. So what we had assumed back in two thousand eighteen was we were going to have a projected surplus of around five million. A former town manager in Lexington had discussed participating to a, a level of about eight million using funds in the.
Community private.
Community preservation act. We have been building up our stabilization fund and the public-private partnership we were anticipating with the passing of that legislation, we thought we might be able to make up the difference. Back then, we had projected revenue of about six hundred thousand dollars a year from a full build, and that's a conservative number, our projections were a little higher, and we rolled them back after actually having several meetings in Lexington, talking to some consultants. So this is the full build that permitted, if I was to make a wave of one, this is what I would want for our kids. But what, what's happened since that time? What unknowns have we experienced? Well, Lincoln charged us one point three million in permitting fees, we believe we're entitled to at least five hundred thousand dollars back, but whether we get it or not, we'll see. The Lincoln inspectors have requested things that have cost us more money, have delayed us. Right now, we're dealing with something called REAs, requests for equitable adjustments. The total from those subcontractors is about eight hundred and eighty-three, and we've taken all this out of the one point nine million, this is, comes out of the four point nine. We had a national grid strike, which cost us at least four hundred thousand, we had to set up a propane farm out there and pay for propane. We've had change orders, we knew we would. So far, we've approved about two million dollars of change orders, largely in the site, largely in the site, and we, we have lists of those if you want more detail, I've never really.
If I could say, is there about one percent of the project?
Yeah.
Which is low.
It's below standard.
That's below standard.
We may have an additional million dollars of change orders, depending on what we learn in the next, as we close out, close those. EverSource delayed our demolition, so far we haven't had an REA from the demolition contractors, but it is possible. Sun Power has pulled out of our photovoltaic project, which has an impact on our lead points. Lead, if we meet our lead standard, we get two additional reimbursement points, that's two billion dollars. That lead reimbursement is at risk now.
Tell them about Sun Power, why?
Sun Power pulled out as a business decision because our project was too small. We'd been dealing with them for over a year and our project seemed to be adequate size, and then as we got closer to it, they, they opted out. We're still working with Beth Greenblatt, our energy consultant, she's been our energy consultant for years. She's trying to find another company who'd participate with us. Also at the legislative breakfast, I'm going to remind them that the governor did not release our one point four million dollars out of the capital. not release our $1.4 million out of the capital bond bill from 2019, which was put in there for our PV project. If we could ever get that money and just put it in ourselves, that's where we reap the maximum benefit. So, those are the unknowns. Those are the brutal facts. That should say brutal facts up there. So, what do we have? Let's just remind ourselves what we have. Got an unbelievable location. There's a demand, documented demand for recreation spaces. I participated in a meeting last week in Lexington, who's hired a consultant to help do a needs assessment for recreational areas and programming in Lexington. The Lexington folks have said that there were 2,500 hours of requests that they were unable to fill last year because they don't have enough recreational spaces.
And did a pool come up with that discussion?
Yes. I didn't identify myself in there, I didn't feel safe.
Because somebody did mention that to me, and then me...
There was a few folks that mentioned pool.
When you spoke at the big one, voters, they spoke to you there?
Yep. We've got House Bill 4513. The design has been completed, repaid for, permitting has been completed. We've had an independent analysis of the revenue potentials. We've made that, we've knocked that down to $500,000. The construction costs are recently verified. SCANSCA would be with us for a time as we phase anything in. We've paid for some of the lighting already. So, is there a phased path to a full build? You know, there's multiple things to be looked at. However, is there a strategy to provide infrastructure? Or there is a strategy, if we move forward phasing, to make sure that we're always working towards that full build. Might take one year, might take three years. So, Phase One would be the football track and the multipurpose field within the football track, football field. Phase Two would be the synthetic baseball field and multipurpose field. Phase Three would be softball, multipurpose, and the fieldhouse, and then the tennis courts. This is not what I'm suggesting happens, it's just a, as I looked at different things. So, this is what the estimates would be for the football field and the track field. It's all synthetic, including markup. It's about $5.9 million. If you include some infrastructure for the following phases, it comes up to about $6.4 million. And when I presented this to the FinCom, and those of you who were there can share with me, Steve, the discussion was, well, we don't want to sell Mill Street. The capital fee has been discussed, it wouldn't come into play for a couple more years. The tax exempt municipal lease, which is debt, but we don't have to go to the towns for it. Remember, we did a tax exempt municipal lease for the ESCO project, and it's just the majority of the School Committee votes it. And I think it was Jim and Steve, you know, suggested the idea of borrowing, because it's so cheap right now. And Bob called Unibank this morning, to see, if we borrowed $6 million bucks today, what would the rate be?
She joked with me at first and said, "Well, the rate, they're going down, it could be in the zeros." She wanted to be conservative, and she did give me some definite conservative numbers, knowing that trend. She also gave me some information, since we've borrowed over the last two months, they have continued to go down.
Really?
But, even if it were to stay or to go back up, because borrowing takes time. In fact, you know, Christine, you had asked about whether they're callable, our bonds, and they are. The problem is, the time it takes to then go out, might, they might go back up. So, she decided to do it on a, you know, a more conservative basis. At 3.5%, $6 million on a 15-year bond would cost about $500,000 a year if we did level debt, so every year would be consistent, which is what I recommend, and I know Kevin's a fan of that as well, because that's predictable. If you did it on a 10-year, a $6 million, 10-year bond, oh, I'm sorry, the 15-year, it would be 3.5% is what she said conservative, but it could be a lot less if the way things are going and if we were to move quickly. At 10-years, it would, $6 million loan would be, the true interest cost would be 3.25, as she calculated, and it would cost about $700,000. But, the trend is going down below that percent rate, we know, because we just got one, the true interest rate on the one that we got was 2.5337, I looked at it as well. So, that's where we're at.
That was for our third round?
Our January round was. So, the potential here is if the school, and when we talked about it with FinCom, you know, Jim knows finance, and he also painted, I think it's important for the School Committee to understand that, he talked about it being fair, because we'd be paid out over 10 years because of our four-year rolling average and the way we calculate that out, it would be based on use. So, the districts that have more students would be paying a bigger portion of that bill. And, you know, there are some benefits. We would have to go out for bid to get a municipal lease consultant to do this for us, to get a tax-free municipal bond. But, the benefits are that it is flexible, and the School Committee has the right to approve it without it going out in all of the districts. So, it is within your purview to do this, and it does seem like a reasonable strategy based on the FinCom discussions, and Jim was a real proponent. If he was here tonight, he could probably be much more articulate than I would be for you, but he was a big proponent of doing this. He felt like it was the fairest way to get this accomplished.
Okay. Let me go through these. So, that, those were my ideas, and they were politely and professionally shot down through the commission. So, Phase One, what would Phase One include? It includes the synthetic surfaces, track, the lighting, surrounding base site work. It does not include these other things, obviously. That's Phase One. But, we would have something for our kids to practice on, play on. What sort of revenue sources might we have? According to the consultant, off that, just multipurpose baseball field, very conservatively, $100,000 a year off of that alone. Other rentals in our revolving account would go up, we may be able to fund some of this through that. This was, I thought I put this up, the revenue from all of the sources, the Phase One and Phase Two, and then if it was fully built, Ballard and King, by the third year, said you would be getting at least a half a million a year from the full build, as it was designed and permitted. And he had all those, all that data. Phase Three would be the upgrade of the softball, multipurpose field site. Phase Three would cost about a half, four and a half million. By this time, in FY '24, this is three years out, the ESCO lease payment is over. That's about $400,000 from the nine remaining members, that's the lease payment obligation. There are seven former members paying the total ESCO lease.
Okay. So, that's what's left for us, is the 40%.
Phase Three and Four, I just put these off the estimates. The infrastructure and general conditions are high, and if you add up all these numbers, they come up about $16.5 million. And I, you know, those general conditions would obviously increase the further out these phasing went, because of escalation. Potential revenue, I already saw this. No, that was on $4 million. So, you see, it's within, it's within the realm of possibilities. It's not crazy. Other potential funding opportunities, if Lexington's needs assessment brings them back to us in a slightly different way, sponsorships, fundraising. You remember, we went to bid twice for public-private partnerships? Other resources can be developed, and the ESCO lease is paid for, so that's the brutal facts of where we are with the athletic fields.
What are we paying in our budget for athletic rentals?
Total.
Total was 64, we put up in our presentation.
68 was how much it increased this year.
Of the year, right.
When you add up transportation?
Everything. What is it?
We can get that exact...
I said we have the number, that's what I was asking.
We can look it up.
Yeah, I think that could be added in.
That's an offset, right. That's clearly an offset.
It's an offset, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a cost we're going to... Now, even with Phase One, you're not going to cover everything, but you're going to...
Start reducing some of the costs.
Make a dent.
So, I just wanted to let the School Committee know about that. I know, if we, I'm sure at the next meeting, we can spend some time to give you a better update, because we'll have a little bit better handle on those REAs and where they reside. And then, I'm going to talk to you, probably in executive session, about the permitting fees.
Today will be the last, but...
No.
Next time.
Pam, I think we ought to keep this on the agenda. I think the School Committee needs to think about it, think about this, but I think we need to have some serious discussions over this. I don't think we should just let it languish. Kids need something. They can't come out there and just have dirt. And, you know, that's really what they're going to get.
So, I think, so, Ed, you're asking us to kind of just take this in, to think about, is there, could we get a copy of this presentation so that we can?
Yeah.
Or is that in our packet?
No.
No. Because I think that would be helpful, at least for me, it'd be helpful to be able to go back and revisit some of what you...
Yeah, Julie can send you all of the copies.
Are there any clarification questions right now that would kind of help people think about it, to have a fuller discussion at the next meeting?
Is anyone going to come up with a proposal, if you know what I mean? In other words, looking at that, looking at money, looking at this, looking at that, to come before the School Committee, saying, "Here's what we suggest that you do," meaning the School Committee?
Well, the Finance Subcommittee and the School Building Committee would be the sources of those recommendations at some point in time. FinCom, I think we've had more discussions there than any place, about, it's a financial decision ultimately, so...
Should we have one with the Building Committee or vice versa?
I think what you need, you know, I think this is a lot of covered information. And I think, you know, the first thing you need to think of is, what's your appetite? You know, when I think about it, what are you willing to pay for? You know, what are the towns that they're willing to pay for? Is this something we should even consider? Or, you know, are we not going to want to incur any debt? What do we want to do? And so, I think we have enough information to make a decision, and we also know what it's going to cost us.
I think what would be helpful for someone, for someone to come before us, asking those questions, and it was breaking it down, questions, maybe those questions, but other questions too, but what do you think about this? What do you think about that? To put it together for us to think about. And I can, I can look at all that, but I don't have the process questions in mind.
That's why we turned to Pam and said, "I think we need this on the agenda, so we can have this kind of a discussion after we've sat and thought about it for a moment, and come back and have a discussion." And, but it's really, what are you willing to pay for?
And I think the officers can think about also, you know, how to be...
Okay. I think it would be helpful to have that.
Right. So, I think maybe two will be, well, we can bring this up at the next officer's meeting as well, to think about the best way to see it.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I have two minds on this. The one mind is, I'm cognizant about the expenses over the next few years with our member town. Now, we're at the part, we knew that this was going to happen, that the crunch was going to happen, and no matter how much we talked about it to them, there's going to be a big uptick in costs, and it hits earlier if we's our project finished earlier. It's happening now, so they're going to be not happy with us in proposing another expense. And yet, if you take the long picture, it may still be smarter to do it now than later. So, I would be disappointed if we end up doing nothing. I think that what you, we need a proposal as a starting point for discussion, a proposal that takes into account all the costs and all the benefits of at least doing that Phase One. So, you have a sheet of paper, and then we have to go to our member towns and have a discussion, because doing something now may be less expensive than doing something later. And we always will have that expense of sending kids out, which is, which we will not be able to eliminate, but we might be able to mitigate. But, we have to get our member towns educated enough to be willing to have the discussion with us, and then ultimately, it's going to come to the point of, are you willing to make, take on more expense now, even though now is the painful time, to save something later on? And they're going to have to be on board for us to proceed. But, you have to come up with, put a stick in the mug to say, "Here's the full proposal of what we're proposing." Now, we're not necessarily really about to go ahead and do this, but we have to have a starting point for discussion with all the facts laid out on a piece of paper. So, I think we do need a real proposal as a starting point for discussion, if nothing else.
Thank you. Alice?
I want to see the offsets included in that, there's a discussion of offsets. And also, we have to consider the impact of not having any athletic fields on the admissions going forward. We're enjoying a bit of a honeymoon here, and if you have nothing for them to play on, they're not going to want to come. So, there's also a potential operations deficit down the road a little bit if you don't have the kids. So, I guess that's another thing to put on the table.
So, my question is, have we given up completely on any outside partnership, other than maybe potentially Lexington, if they...
I don't, I wouldn't use the word "given up." We've explored the hell out of it and haven't, why waste any more time on it? Let's deal with reality. Once we get a, if we can get a strategy in place that we're comfortable with and initiate it, then I'd be able to spend some cycles researching that some more.
Ed never gives up.
So, other questions or things people want to see for our next discussion? You know, without getting into the discussion?
Yeah, I'm writing these down. Done.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll, we'll discuss with the officers more, and be prepared to be discussing it at the next meetings going forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Subcommittee reports. Jim is not here, but Dave or Steve, do you have a finance meeting?
I think the only, I mean, we've talked pretty much about our last meeting, pretty much, and other agenda items, but one thing Jim had raised, and I don't know if Bob has had a chance to look at it, he's, Jim suspected that the calculation for next year's Chapter 70 might be too low for us, that, that, it is understanding, and I think the way I understand it too, is that there's a floor of what you got last year, plus $30 a student, and it doesn't seem like the calculations Desi put together are true, so I don't know.
I did actually do a follow-up with Ron O'Donnell at the Department of N. And so...
Can you not hear it?
Speak up.
Yeah. Okay. So, I followed up with Ron O'Donnell from DESI, who is in the finance office there, and he's the person who actually calculated it. And he did send me emails, like, I was going to share that with the FinCom at our next meeting, that unlike the, the regulations said that there should be a base floor, but that's to prevent enrollment increases or decreases, you know, kind of like our four-year revolving, to try and, to make sure that you don't go down. But, this is the case where students are, a district is leaving our district, and so those students are now responsible, the responsibility has fell on. He also identified that they did the exact same thing when we had six member districts leave, and it was, we had that very same impact for our Chapter 70 funding. So, unfortunately, that's something the Finance Committee is going to look at, because after they recalculated, I don't know if you recall, but they had left the Belmont students in our foundation enrollment numbers, then they realized they left it in our foundation Chapter 70 calculation. So, the first thing we did was take out the enrollment numbers, but then we now know that there was going to be a difference of about $105,000 in our Chapter 70 funding, so we'll have to address that as soon as we can manage that. The FinCom wanted me to look into it. The FinCom wanted me to look into it, I gave it to the Department of Ed, and it has happened in the past, because ultimately, now they're responsible for those 44 students, and that's why the funding goes with the student, I guess, like we explained it in some boy terms.
Okay.
But that was a big part of our discussion, as well as all of the other financial information that we discussed today.
Okay. More to come.
Thank you, Bob.
Yes, thank you. Strategic planning, analysts, so forth.
The committee has completed really its two basic assignments that we were given in the beginning. First, school committee succession plan, which we did a little over a year ago, and most of that information is on the website. And then we all had a retreat, as you well know, with leadership succession planning, of asking Amy to hand out the results of that. I, I really don't see any reason for a discussion on that this evening, but I think, but having that, seeing the results, would be helpful. Our sue will be back at the next meeting if the officers decide they want to have more of a discussion. I quite frankly, think the job is done for now. It's, I think it was a very useful exercise, and it's a lot of good information here, but I think for where we are at this stage, we've, we've done our job doing it now.
Okay. So this is for us to review?
Your side.
Good reading.
Some light reading, yes. Okay, policies.
I want to add a comment before we go, after this one, quick one, which is that because of the, we were talking about, Amy and I were talking this morning, and I've been talking with Dr. McQuillan and Pam, about should the school be closed, or should there be other things that prohibit school committee members from coming to the meeting, was what did you do about remote participation? This is something that we beat like a dead horse for years, many years ago, and I was a prime opponent of remote participation because of the technical problems that occur and the possibilities that, you know, for shenanigans to go on and so forth. However, it turns out that in the state law, it's actually residing in the state law, that it's required that you have a quorum of the committee physically present in the space for anyone to participate remotely. So I called the Attorney General's office, and they said they can't issue any guidance or waiver on that issue, because it's in the state law. And they encourage you to call your legislators and to ask them to give us some relief from that. And they also suggest that people sign up for the AG's newsletter, because there will probably be emergency legislation coming forward, and you would get the quickest information about that from per newsletter.
The AG's.
The AG's website, yeah.
Right.
And so I did talk to my state rep, left her message about the quorum present requirement, that is in the general laws, Part 1, Tail 3, Chapter 38, Section 20. So if you guys want to call your state rep and talk to them, that'd be great. I spent a lot of time reading about this this morning, looking what I was planning. So we'll probably come back with something at a next meeting, maybe, to allow us to move forward once there is something to work.
Alice, can you give that information to Julia to send out to all of us?
Sure. Yeah. In fact, I already emailed it to her earlier today.
We can meet in the courtyard and stand 20 feet apart and yell at each other at the top of our lungs, that would be bad.
Okay.
You don't have the right people to do that.
The next thing is actually in your packet, and this is something that Dr. McQuillan was on in the room, asked us to look at earlier. It's DBACM, it's page 21. And the point of this is to require the district to continually renovate the school, basically maintain the school that we built. So no matter what happens later down the road, there's no opportunity to shave stuff off the maintenance budget to make sure that we keep something going, and end up where we ended up before, which forced us to build a new school, and so many school districts did. So this one or two sentence policy is just intended to require that the school perform an annual facilities audit, not a maintenance audit, because we learned that the difference would be, you know, the maintenance audit would be like, you know, polishing the floors and stuff like that. There's a facilities audit, which will give them the dollar figure they need to develop a capital maintenance plan, which is part of our budget. So I'd like a motion to approve this annual capital maintenance policy for first reading, and then we'll have discussion. So moved.
Second.
No discussion.
I did, hopefully you didn't spend too many hours on this particular policy, you know, something that takes days, weeks.
Thirty seconds. I like that.
But the concept we talked about for over time...
Yeah, with several meetings, was brought up on the agenda, and we discussed it, so forth, but we wanted to keep it simple.
Very happy to see this. That's my comment.
Oh, okay.
Very happy.
Jeff is happy.
Very.
He's smiling.
That's all that matters.
Really is. That is. They should go on to our policies.
Yeah.
More chocolate.
Okay, anybody want to take a vote? All in favor? Because it's for first reading, anybody opposed? No, and I do not have a favor. Every time I talk...
I'm in the vulnerable population.
We're going to be social.
Yeah, many of us are vulnerable.
Dave is self-identified.
The governor said old people are 60 and old today, so whoa.
I'm going to work for all of them.
That makes me feel good.
That's the end of the policies that could be the meeting. I do want to say, with Jim Gamel and Dave Portman, Amy Carrow, just amazing team.
Thank you all.
And Ford?
No, it was not part of it, but I have something to say. Remote participation, I also have been opposed to it. Dover now has it, we use it in all. I think it is an excellent idea. I think to do away with a quorum, however, at the meeting is wrong, because that, you've taken away from the discussion, any kind of, so ours is, you have to have a quorum, there's certain notifications that you have to give, and it's all, it's not just a cell phone that's provided, there are other devices, but I think it is absolutely a necessity. I did send an email to our superintendent today, based on the governor's thing, that this is an emergency thing, and I thought, well, maybe we should have allowed not remote participation, but remote listening in for members that couldn't be here, and I thought that would have been all right. I'm not disagreeing with that, but I think it's something we should do to move forward.
So when we do bring something back, it may include a paragraph describing how it would only be used in an emergency, so...
I think, you know, we use it all the time, because somebody has to have an excuse, they can't be sitting at home.
No, 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 the way to the forum.
But if it's on business, but you need to have a forum.
Okay, well, the way to the forum. When it comes back for an agenda item, we can talk about it.
Well, I'm just commenting on your comments.
Okay. Anything else on policy?
Nope.
It will be coming back for another agenda item.
Yep.
Okay. Secretary's report, Dave.
If you look on page 23, Julia, would you walk us through the changes on page 23? Does it also start with we, on page 20, do we change, where's this presentation on? Do we change that to Dr. McQuillan?
It should be Dr. McQuillan, not Dr. Gerardi.
And also, yeah. And also, so it wouldn't say the Director of Finance would do the guiding guidelines, it would be the Superintendent.
Analyst correct.
So under 1A, cross out Dr. Bob Gerardi and put Dr. Ed McQuillan. And in line one, line one, cross out the Director of Finance and substitute Superintendent. And I think the rest of the wording, all the way through, is appropriate. Maybe the last paragraph, Bob, you probably did say that, right?
He did, he did, thank you.
You thanked the Executive Committee, Finance Committee and the Executive, I can remember that.
Sounds like Bob.
I think that's the only, that's the only change.
Yes.
So I move the, February 4th, 2022, to have...
Second. Any discussion on favor? Thank you. Okay, so there is another executive section?
I'm looking at the adjournment.
For now, five minutes?
Oh, we did, we did step.
No, 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 we're supposed to do the executive session minutes.
Are there any?
Yeah. I think we should do...
Oh, so then we do...
I withdraw mine.
Yes, sorry.
Please be a mo...
Okay. I will move to enter executive session, pursuant to match government, Chapter 30A, Section 22F, review and finalize the first minute of executive session committee held in June 14, 2020, to determine whether continued non-disclosure of such minutes is appropriate.
Not to return.
Not to return is very good session. Adjourned and begun.
Who needs to stay?
No.
No one?
No. Oh, well, who stays? Julia, Julia, Dr. McQuillan, I think. Does anybody else need to stay? I need a little bit to...
They just need to pay their respects.
Can't imagine. For Bob. Do you care? You can't vote on.
Okay. You want to say it both with me, I can give you my crossing.
Okay. Steve, you want to start us off?
So Steve will do a comment, yes.
Jennifer, do you like after yes?
I'm not saying yes.
Just to lead them, yes.
Fourth morning's over, yes.
Dave, Dave.